All right, I have a thumbs up. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our board meeting. I will call this meeting February the sixth to order. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance. Follow that by invocation from Alderman Vaughn and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Vaughn, if you would give the invocation, please, sir.
Good evening, Father. Good evening, the Lord Jesus, the Holy Spirit, Father of God, the God of creation, the living life, the Father, and the Lord Jesus Christ, God of Abraham, God of all around the world. Father God, we gather the people of this city, just man, and his bold and proud God that you allowed the people to touch the heart and the people to elect us and put in your position. We pray, Father, that we don't take any position, but we make the best decision that we're going to find. We pray so much, Father God, for all you allow us to achieve and advantage to align us to serve to do. And every part of you can be created to be blessed and then come to reality. Oh, Father God, we pray that you actually let you forgive us of all our sins and unknowns and unseen. That our trespasses, Father, we pray so much for the laws and rumors of all around. We pray for all that we live in the city, the Christian, the city-state economy, Father God. But we were not leaning in favor of our own, so we continue to look to you for the Bible and we understand how to use the God who is your people. Father, we pray that you are true to you because of who you are. We pray that you pray that you are. Thank you for being an hour ago, and also being an hour ago, Father, and you too. Thank you for controlling our destiny, not leaning against it, and you are the Lord of all. I am leaning to you, crying in your name. Amen.
All right, thank you again, everyone. We appreciate you being here on this, our first meeting of February of 2024. Our first item of business would be approval of the official agenda with consented items. And we'll, we will see if there are any changes. Alderman, Beatty, any changes to the, to the agenda of the consented items? Alderman's sister.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Mayor, excuse me, one thing. Let's take the, and I'm, 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 for support, the trip, the, the Washington trip. Let's just pull that and let's talk about the, just.
The Washington trip.
Is, is, do we have a, an agenda item that, that will be approved, a trip to?
No, no, I'm, I'm taking, I'm, I'm paying for that trip myself. This is just the resolution.
Is it on the agenda where we talk about the, the, the bill, Graham?
If you don't talk about the resolution, it is on the consent. So if you want to change the.
Yes, that's what I want to do is just segue that into, let's just, just.
Okay, so you, you wish to pull the, you wish to pull mayor's business number, whatever, this nine, my Roman number, number nine eight.
Information.
Remove it from, okay, remove from consent. All right. All right. That is done. And that's, that's it?
I see.
Okay. Alderman's sister.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, seeing none, if you, or, or seeing that there are no more changes, if you would please, I need a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items as modified. I have a motion from Alderman Beatty. Do you have a second? Second, excuse me, second from Alderman Vaughn. All those in favor, please signify by sending aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. And I will read the consented agenda items. First is consideration of the minutes of the January second, twenty twenty four regular meeting of the mayor and the board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the January twelfth, twenty twenty four work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the January sixteenth, twenty twenty four recess meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Consideration of twenty twenty four recess meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Then under mayor's business, item B is request authorization to approve a state-required five-year full-load safety test on both city hall elevators from Cone Care Elevator in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars as part of the maintenance contract with Cone. Under the airport, we have number one, request approval for the Clearwater Consultants, Inc. work authorization number twenty-four dash zero one for the twenty twenty four AIP project three two eight dash zero zero six eight dash zero three two dash two zero two four for clearing, rubbing, seating, mulching, and miscellaneous site work for runway extension. Two is request approval to apply for an MDOT multimodal grant for a new hangar for the purpose of leasing it to UMMC Aircare and disaster response operations at George M. Bryan Field with an approximate C-match of fifty-three thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Under community development and planning, we have number one, consideration of travel for city planner Daniel Havillan to attend the National Planning Conference in Minneapolis, Minnesota on April thirteenth through the sixteenth, twenty twenty four, with advanced travel and registration costs not to exceed two thousand six hundred dollars. Under engineering, we have number one, consideration of approving the as-needed professional services agreement with Golden Triangle Planning and Development District, Inc. for GIS-related services. Two is consideration of amending the official city of Starkville street map and register. Three is consideration of approving amendment number one to the Highway one eighty-two revitalization, constructibility, and design review professional services agreement with Neil Schaefer, Inc., not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for preparation of the twenty twenty four RACE grant application. Under finance administration, item two is consideration of fiscal year twenty twenty four budget amendments effective one thirty-one twenty-four. Under human resources, we have number one, request authorization to hire Leo Maldonado as an intern for the human resources department. Two is request authorization to hire Jimmy P. as a certified police officer, three, in the Starkville Police Department. Three is consideration of the discipline recommended by sanitation director Chris Smiley as a result of IA number zero two zero six two zero two four for a Starkville sanitation worker. Four is request authorization to hire Charles Woodard as an intern for the Starkville Utilities Department. Five is request authorization to hire Chandler Dye as a apprentice lineman, two, Ladavious Williams as apprentice lineman, one, and Robert Ethan Rollins as apprentice lineman, one, in the Starkville Utilities Department. Six is request authorization to hire Kim R. Sims as a non-certified firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department. Under parks, we have number one, consideration of approving change order number one in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars, increase to Paradigm Contractors LLC for the McKee Park Pickleball Resurfacing Project. Two is consideration of approving change order number one in the amount of four thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-five deduct to Mills Contracting LLC for the Needmore Community Center Project. Three is consideration of accepting the lower quote from S and K Door and Specialty Company, Inc. for the roll-up door for the Sportsplex Center storage room in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Four is consideration of accepting the lower quote from Triangle Drywall Supply, Inc. for framing and drywall of the storage room wall at the Sportsplex Center in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. Five is consideration of accepting the lower quote from DOS Electric LLC for the Sportsplex Center gem divider curtain installation assistance for a total of fifty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Six is consideration of approving the lower quote from Columbus Fence Company, LLC for repairing the baseball field fence at JL King Park in the amount of five thousand fifteen dollars. Under police, we have the request approval to extend the lease agreement with Harley-Davidson of Central Mississippi for three Harley-Davidson police motorcycles at three hundred and fifty dollars per motorcycle per month until April twenty twenty five. Under code enforcement, we have call, call for the public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated twenty-one nineteen eleven to determine whether the building located at two oh one Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, three nine seven five nine with a parcel number one five nine J dash zero zero dash zero two eight point zero one is in such a state of uncleanness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and such that demolition could occur. B is call for public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated twenty-one nineteen eleven to determine whether the building located at two four five Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, three nine seven five nine with a parcel number one five nine J dash zero zero dash zero two eight point zero one is in such a state of uncleanness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and such that demolition could occur. C is call for a public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated twenty-one nineteen eleven to determine whether the building located at three oh five Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, three nine seven five nine with parcel number one five nine J dash zero zero dash zero two eight point zero one is in such a state of uncleanness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and such that demolition could occur. And number D is call for public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated twenty-one nineteen eleven to determine whether the building located at three twenty-five Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, three nine seven five nine with parcel number one five nine J dash zero zero dash zero two eight point zero one is in such a state of uncleanness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and such that demolition could occur. Under sanitation department, we have request approval for consideration to advertise for the purchase of a street sweeper for the sanitation and environmental services department and to sell the two thousand and seven international street sweeper. Under utilities, number one, we have consideration of approval of change order number four for a price increase of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and ten dollars to DNA for the Main Street Water and Sewer Improvements Project for replacement of twelve-inch concrete pavement. Number two is request authorization, authorization to advertise for bids for the construction of city of Starkville, Starkville Utilities' main office generator. Number three is request authorization to accept the lowest quote from Meyer Utility Structures for the purchase of seven concrete poles in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. And number four is consideration to approve the drug-free workplace certification and lobbying restriction certification as part of the ARC contract grant agreement for Starkville Wastewater Treatment Plant, WWTP, Influent Pump Station Rehabilitation adopted September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. And that concludes our consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
My pleasure. Happy to do that. All right, now, next we go to announcements and comments, and I have a couple of comments. One of them is to basically remind everyone to vote, Ward one voters, registered Ward one voters. Um, we have a special election that will be held on Tuesday, February the thirteenth at the Starkville Sportsplex Annex Building, which is not the big Travis Outlaw Center, but the small building that is to the left of it as you face it. Um, at four oh five Lynn Lane, with the polls open at seven AM, close at seven PM. And we have absentee voting opportunities every day from eight to five, Monday through Friday. And then on Saturday, we have absentee opportunities from eight to twelve. So the city, city clerk's office will be manned during that time, and it will be this Saturday. And then the election is on, on the thirteenth, so it's one week away, folks. It's a, it's a short term, so. Um, anyway, that will be, that'll be something that I'm hoping that Ward one will come out in force. We would, we certainly want, um, want everyone to do that and take advantage of absentee voting. If you don't think you're going to be here, please do that. The other thing I want to mention, I just found out this afternoon, and Mr. Burnett emailed me that we had an improvement in our FEMA rating from a nine to an eight, which is a positive thing. And it assists our, um, insurance ratings, our flood insurance ratings. So that should be a decrease of ten percent, I believe, to those who were impacted for their insurance rates, which is a very, excuse me, a very positive thing. So I'm delighted, I'm delighted at that. And, um, I believe that concludes comments for me. Alderman Beatty, anything from you, sir?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, Alderman's sister.
I'd like to clarify, um, Madam Clerk, um, are they able to vote absentee Monday? Or does it end at noon on Saturday?
Okay, my bad. I did say Monday through Friday, didn't I? I was thinking it was a longer time than it, than it is. It's, yeah, we are, we are close to it, so, all right. Thank you for that, Claire.
Certainly.
Um, oh, Vice Mayor, anything? Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, all right, um. With that, we have citizens' comments, which is an opportunity for citizens to come forward and give us your thoughts on subject, excuse me, any subject. Um, we have three minutes. And it's timed by Ms. Harden, so, um, if you have anything you wish to share with us. Mr. Turner, always nice to see you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Evan Turner, Ward seven, to, to the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief, to the sanitation. Citizens have a few concerns. Um, the, uh, then elderly that live on one oh eight, uh, Azalea Lane. Uh, if could, uh, put a camera there, a lot of elderly people, uh, live in that area. And the young people scared of very much that, uh, they do whatever, whenever. But, uh, on Azalea Lane, uh, you can put a camera there, and it's one oh eight, Azalea Lane. Also, um, on Cedar, Cedar Lane, uh, the elderly is afraid that the children get hit uh, because of the speed they come through there, um, and, uh, they just want the children to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else? We shouldn't just speak during citizens' comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, we have no public appearances. We do have public hearings, so we have several public hearings. The first one being what I think some folks are here for. Um, so this is a public hearing on adopting a security camera ordinance for retail and professional centers of a certain size. This is our first one. We will have a second one at our next board meeting before we potentially take up a vote on that particular item. So anyone wishing to speak, we have either for or against. Now is your opportunity to do so. Mr. Turner, you're coming back, all right. And we will take notes of that. Um, and if you, when you speak, if you would please, um, give us your name, so we'll have for the record.
Uh, good evening. My name is Evan again. Uh, several months ago, uh, our own, uh, Chief Frank Nichols' mother was approached by some carnage. She, she didn't get hurt, but we, we're hoping that the cameras, the Popeyes and Kroger's and, and, uh, it happened in Kroger parking lot. But we hoping that Popeyes and Kroger and all the cameras can, uh, uh, make it to where they, we can put hands on these people there, take a grand job to elderly.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner. All right, anyone else? Mr. Sherman?
First of all, thank y'all for your service. Appreciate what all y'all do for the city. Uh, my name is George Sherman. I have been a resident of Starkville for fifty-five wonderful years. And I've owned a business here for fifty years, and I may be the oldest running single proprietorship in Starkville. You know, one owner for fifty years. We just finished fifty years. And I'm here with some College Park owners, um, who are concerned about the, uh, the camera ordinance. It would certainly affect us because we have more than, than twenty-five parking places at College Park. In fact, we have twenty-five in the back, more than twenty-five in the back and more than twenty-five in the front. Um, and just a couple of, you know, certainly, you know, we're, we're concerned about it from, from several different angles, is that, for one thing, the shopping center's almost forty years old. And I'm happy to say, proud to say, we've never had a break-in, we've never had a window broken, we've never had anything sketchy out in the parking lot that we know of. But, you know, it's, we've been pretty safe, you know, we're close to the police station, thank you, chief. And we're close to the fire station, that could be a deterrent, too. But anyway, we've, we've been happily living there almost forty years. And, uh, we're just worried that, uh, number one, about the financial cost. And we've had a couple of estimates run, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to put our cameras in. We're worried about, you know, you know, certainly privacy issues, um, and maybe the ability or, or the, the chance that some of that, that video may get misused. We have a financial planner, um, who has a business there who certainly doesn't, you know, like the idea that his customers would be on film, uh, or, or on, on video. And, uh, because of the privacy issues there. And, um, just kind of seems like a little bit of an overreach by government to, to mandate this, mandate this. We understand the safety of it and, and what it's intended to do, but we just feel like, um, seems like most of the crimes, or not most of the crimes, but a lot of the crimes happen in apartments. And I don't, I don't know whether or not apartments are being required to do this or is it just, you know, professional and retail centers? And, um, we just, we're just here to go on record to say that we're, we're against it, so respectfully.
Appreciate, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. All right, anyone else? Anyone else? No? All right, well, we appreciate that, so, um, noted. And we will have a second public hearing again, um, at the next board meeting, which will be on the twentieth. And that will be an opportunity again, if you wish to come forward and add anything else to that or whoever else might, might wish to do so. Um, all right, so I will close it as a public hearing and move to the next public hearing, which is Mr. Havillan.
Mayor, before we start on that, well, we have an opportunity as a board to discuss this.
Of course, yeah. We will, we'll discuss it at the, excuse me, at the next.
Discuss the, the issues and pros and cons of this.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's, it's pretty significant issues for, it's, it's affecting retail community. And, and some of the questions that, um, Mr. Sherman asked about apartments and things like that, I, I don't know. I mean, those just, those, that'd be information I'd need, would want to know about.
Okay, well, I tell you what, um, Havillan, if you just hold for a second, we can, we can have a little bit of a discussion now if you want to, because we'll have, we'll have the opportunity next time around. So the ordinance itself says there is no requirement for apartments at all. That's a living area, that's a privacy issue. This is strictly based on commercial, retail, professional kinds of centers. So it is intended, um, strictly for that. Uh, the, the ordinance was drafted, uh, one similar that's in Madison, obviously tailored to us. We changed it a little bit. Um, the chief has, um, I think, working to be in contact with the Madison folks to talk with them about it. Um, and I don't know any, any other thing. Is there another? I mean, I'm happy to talk about it. If you have a copy of the ordinance, I know.
How long has Madison been there?
They've adopted, I think it was a couple of years ago.
Has it, have we talked to them about whether they are pleased with that?
Yes.
I mean, I guess a lack of pleased would mean there's been a drop in crime or there's been no, or, or no parent.
Madison never had much of a problem with crime, to be honest. I don't, I don't know. But I know that Mr. Castleberry has property down there, and he's, he is pleased with it, has no problem with it. And his contact here, he said he has no problem with it here as well.
Yes, it is. I know about the price thing on the apartment, but we got some big apartment complexes here that have hundreds of students. And I, are they, do they have, do those developments like the thing, or this big development, all this big, uh, uh, student housing thing on, on the University Boulevard, the one down at Mississippi State's, owns this town.
I don't know if they do.
I wonder if those have.
I don't know if they do or not. They may have, they may have them in their lobbies, I don't know. But this is strictly exterior related. It's strictly, and, and the, we have a camera there at Maxwell and University that probably would capture most of the exterior. that probably would capture most of the exterior up and down University Drive, so, some of those areas that are more densified, and, and as, as example of that, we have, we have that accessibility there, so.
What, what's the trigger for the, for the plot?
Five, five thousand square foot.
How many parking spaces, is that a parking space thing?
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Mm-hmm.
Um, let me ask you this, would, as far as bearing the cost of, the, the original cost of installing, purchasing installation stuff, is the, is the owner required to pay the monitoring fee once it's installed? How, how does, how would, how would that work?
As it's scheduled, as it, as it's written right now, and again, you know, it's, the reason we have public hearings is to see what it is, but as it's written right now, the, the entire burden is on the landowner, landlord, landowner, land, property owner, landlord, um, and they are responsible for the installation, they have a year to put it in, so it's the grace period of getting it in, like, within a year, and then some extension if necessary for whatever extreme circumstances, you know, availability of cameras or whatever, and then the monitoring would be on them on an annualized basis.
So, would that have a third-party monitoring service like most security cameras have? Would be us monitoring the cameras?
No, no, and we only get it if, if something happens and we need to go back and ask for it, that would be the, that would be the impetus for us, even knowing anything about having what the camera was showing. The chief, um, in particular, we've, I think, gone back and asked for cameras from, uh, convenience stores not too long ago, um, and I know Alderman Brooks helped solve a murder, as I recall, um, through his Ring camera at his house slash home office, but that's his, you know, his, his choice, but it has proven to be helpful, and I think he's, he will say so when he's back here next time around.
Know some of those, those, uh, convenience store cameras and things that they've, they've been able to identify?
Yes, uh, Chief, would you mind speaking to that real quickly, please? Uh, well, or however long it takes you, but would you mind speaking to that for Oliver V?
Absolutely, to make sure that we're on record here, could you ask the question again to make sure addressing success?
Um, how effective have the cameras been, um, in, um, identifying people who've committed crimes that, that currently, I mean, or, or, not currently, uh, that have committed crimes at convenience stores and retail and commercial businesses that had them installed in Starkville Park, have them now?
Uh, cameras have been essential, and multiple reasons for that, um, first of all, uh, a lot of people don't necessarily come forward with this information for the police, that's, that's a little bit surprising sometimes, being a police chief, but it's the reality. Cameras don't lie, cameras show who was there, cameras show who was not there, cameras show signatures on cars that are extremely important to make sure we do have the right individual. Uh, to put it on record, uh, just recently, the valuable of a camera, Kroger parking lot, last year on a Sunday afternoon, at six o'clock on a Sunday afternoon, an individual attempted an armed robbery, or successful armed robbery over a phone transaction. Everybody was armed, everybody, the victim too, the only reason why the victim did not shoot the three suspects is because he had extended family in that parking lot. The suspects left, vacated Kroger parking lot, all the crowds, everything going on, and left west towards Sturgis. I won't get into names, because some of this is pending, but an individual came out of that crowd, a teacher, and gave a very valuable thing, said this was one of my students, positively identified the suspect. Suspect that she identified was out of parchment on an armed robbery charge. The suspect that she identified also drove the same vehicle that we were looking for, and lived in the western part of the county. Right before our team got ready to move on that suspect, they realized something, one had a luggage rack, one didn't. The camera didn't lie, the camera wasn't emotional, camera didn't miss that key ingredient. We had a strong probable cause there, and the information we're getting at the time, so to go back to your question, accuracy is undeniable, even from low-end cameras, sir, even, we've had that debate with some others that have, um, had this discussion. Cameras give us accuracy to the event of what occurred or what didn't occur, because there's a lot of false crimes that are put out there that can be devastating to, uh, university community economically, and it's very difficult for us to tell, to tell a victim, wait a minute, you're, you're not being accurate here. Um, but the cameras, again, take that kind of neutrality position. They have been instrumental in almost every felony, serious felony investigation we have. We've been very open and transparent about how we, uh, do our own camera systems, and I'd like to add, while we're at it, I think that Mr. Sherman brings up very legitimate, you know, concerns, there's always a balance between government and private business, but economically, that's how you produce a better product, you have to talk about transparency, how you access data, and it's got to be open for the world to see. If we do that, then we're not, um, falling behind, we're able to really be able to address crime. And again, to Mr. Sherman's point, that particular area was very quiet, but we also had a bank robber run through there, we also have stalking vehicles that came into the parking lot related to domestic stalking, things that might not transpire into a, a commercial burglary, are still a part of the overall safety of the community. So, the cameras in any applicable chief or sheriff that has anything close to the systems we have, say they're their first tool, because they provide so much information at such a cost-effective means.
May I ask no questions?
Sure.
Are they a deterrent?
I think they have to be, I think the Department of Justice has put it out that statistics have showed that they are deterrent, people perform differently when they realize that cameras are out there, uh, they perform better, simply put, in a commercial en- environment, when you know you're being videotaped, you will perform a little differently than when you're not.
Um, I might guess, Bob, there's some more questions.
Well, and, and you certainly will have another opportunity. Let me see, uh, anyone else?
Maybe we can ask.
Vice Mayor?
Chief, Mayor, colleagues to the public and to all those who are joining in online, Chief, I'm very impressed with your, um, your response, uh, to the, um, inquiries from the gentleman from Ward Five. I appreciate your, um, very sound and positive and outstanding leadership that you're doing for our city in terms of keeping us completely and fully safe here at all times. The, um, evidence is very clear in our city that, um, your real-time intelligence center, which consists of these cameras that are strategically located or very valuable and noteworthy tools in your law enforcement, um, efforts, want to commend you and your, uh, staff for doing a very impeccable job. I, Honorable Mayor, have, and Mr. Honorable State Attorney and colleagues, I read this ordinance in the entirety, I read it word for word, and I'm gonna be, just be straight to the point and really frank with everyone, like they know that I'm accustomed and always do. Do want to commend the mayor for her leadership in bringing this ordinance forward. Why I want to commend her for bringing it forward, it's outstanding leadership, because this is a valid attorney, uh, exercise of our police powers that are afforded us as a municipality under the Tenth Amendment. The Tenth Amendment is real clear that we have the authority, uh, to exercise all powers that are not relegated to the federal government, and we can, in those police powers, we can take all actions to promote the health, safety, and welfare. As this ordinance, uh, clearly states, uh, that, uh, in the first couple of warrants clause, that the purpose of this ordinance is to provide for a safer community, for our, um, residents, customers, visitors, businesses, and employees, um, given the climate that we're in, in this, um, day and time, um, the overall intent of this ordinance is, if you're in Starkville, Mississippi, this mayor and governing body want to fully, totally, and completely ensure that everyone that is within this corporate limit of Starkville, Mississippi is, is, is fully safe. We want to ensure that we provide and afford a safe environment for everyone. Insufficient security, as this ordinance states, uh, is not a ways and means of providing ample protection. The ordinance goes on to say that this, uh, camera system, uh, will, uh, aid our law enforcement with its resources in identification, apprehension, accountability, and conviction. And that is what we need here. The, uh, mayor clearly indicated, the, the wording of the ordinance indicates that any retail business center with, uh, five thousand square feet or more, or twenty-five and/or twenty-five parking spaces or more, would be, uh, subject to this ordinance. So, Mayor, I'd like to conclude by saying that it is a very valid exercise of our police powers, and, and certainly, uh, when this matter comes up for a vote on final passage, I'm gonna support it, because, uh, this is one of the best pieces of legislation that I've seen come to this board during my, uh, more than third and a half years of, um, tenure as an Alderman, slash Vice Mayor, and I say that because we have to take a strong stance and exercise proper, sound, and strong leadership to keep the people in our community safe. We have a university out there, which is, in my opinion, the best university in the Southeastern Conference, we have over twenty-seven thousand students, the, um, the parents, the visitors, the residents, and all others who come within our city, we want to keep this city safe. And the only way we can do it, we're gonna have to require these cameras to be here, and what cameras do, it put people on notice that, that you are not to commit crime, 'cause when they see these cameras, as the chief has, has clearly indicated tonight, when they see the cameras, then they have second thoughts about any idea of committing crime in the city. So, it is my opinion that, um, those that I'm in communications with, and I'm sure all of us, we have zero tolerance for crime. If we're gonna have zero tolerance for crime, we need to take every reasonable measure to keep this city safe. And if we keep this city safe, this is gonna be, continue to be a great place to live, it's gonna continue to be a great place to work, it's gonna be a great place to learn. So, that's, um, how I see it, Mayor, and I appreciate your leadership, uh, um, in bringing this to this table tonight, and I just hope whenever the final passage, uh, come or consideration, that this, uh, ordinance will be adopted, as written in our yield.
Thank you, very, Vice Mayor. Oliver Von, anything?
No, ma'am, ma'am.
Oliver Sisdrak, I'm gonna need to skip you. All right, anything further?
Yes, ma'am.
You got, yes? Okay.
Yes, um, Chief, wouldn't we want to add, if, if, if we start this process, 'cause I think Ma- Madison's probably, they, theirs has been very thoughtfully, um, constructed, their, their ordinance was written, um, but we, I mean, I was my, I mean, we might, if we're gonna do this, would we want, would we want to add industry parking lots, school parking lots, apartment, these big, I, I, I think, big apartment complexes, apartments, if they don't have already?
Uh, well, no, I think, I think we have an issue with living areas and apartments, and that seems to be the case, that some court cases have come forward with that. Now, industry parking lots, um, we can certainly consider that as an addition.
Aren't, aren't, uh, don't private developments put there on, uh?
And they might, but us mandating, I think is part of the, part of the issues that relates to, um, apartments and living.
What about Mississippi State's dorms and things like that?
That's.
Do they have?
They do have a system, sir, but the students are, uh, protected, obviously, for privacy purposes, they have, uh, uh, real life, uh, center, uh, they have several cameras out there that obviously every dorm, uh, every building out there has a coverage that they monitor, that they monitor.
They monitor themselves?
They monitor themselves, and they keep it separate naturally for that separation.
Is that the issue, with the pop things, having a third-party?
Uh, well, I, I think like the mayor said, there's the privacy of, uh, living, it, we do see developers or apartment, uh, management that says, hey, we want to be a part of your system, and they've came on board, uh, even to include some of those in the county have had those discussions to say, hey, look, we've been, you know, recipients of crimes, we've had large parties where, you know, our students are robbed or something like that, we really want to make it a part of that system, and that's great, there's no restrictions there, it's totally open, but it's not mandated, um, uh, but, and to go back with the schools, all the schools are on board, they've already been there, uh, obviously the ordinance did touch, but the schools as far as, especially their parking lots and athletic events and stuff like that, and the, and the nature, this is so diverse, it is active shooter, things like that, that, uh, the schools have leaned in on, in the superintendents, and, and headmasters have been very much, uh, for, uh, and have already been on board with, with the schools. And, and, um, uh, just to add to this while we're talking, and to Mr. Sherman's cause, I would love to be able to have a representative to talk to your camera people, to see if we can't work on that fourteen thousand from, again, from a business balance standpoint of what we truly need to make it, to make sure that, um, you're getting the best, you know, insight from a, from what we do every day from investigations, to be able to find that business-government balance, uh, to make this an easier task for everybody involved.
Uh, you, a couple more, Mayor, thank, I appreciate the difference on that, uh, convenience store, law of crime, you know?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
They will meet these thresholds?
Uh, convenience stores, for the most part, are on board, uh, but as Mr. Turner actively brought up, uh, you know, uh, it's, it's out there, the western part of the city is not nearly as strong as what you would think in the eastern and the annexation and some of the north side.
Let me interrupt here, because, uh, paragraph, uh, under section three, the last paragraph, this article shall apply to all businesses which are required by local state law to obtain an on-premises permit for the sale, distribution, or consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer and light wine, or cannabis derivatives, so.
And alcohol, you have cannabis?
Yes, yes, so they are not excluded from that, um, so, that is, you know, that is not, uh, that's not having anything to do with their parking places or their, or their size, it has to do with what they're selling.
What they're selling.
Yes, sir.
And the major ones are on board, sir, the major ones are already, they have cameras, or they are a part of our system, and there's a separation there in having cameras or being part of our system, definitely two different videos.
What, um, what's the monitoring cost average on, on these things, you know, about what, what places are gonna have to pay for, monthly, for, for their costs of monitoring?
I do not know on the third-party, if, if Mr. Sherman gets a third-party monitor, I think that storage is the main thing here, because we are still very reactionary in our crime response, meaning we don't have someone actively, um, being proactive, unless we have an event like Bulldog Bash or something that's gonna bring in large crowds, or, or our intelligence centers up and very active, but we're not, uh, twenty-four, seven with that activity, and most of what we're talking about is third-party or, uh, someone, I'll use the example of Security Solutions that sets something up, and, and the storage is monitored by the owners or by Security Solutions, and I think those prices will depend upon cameras' needs, and each complex will be individually different on that.
And let me see if I can help with that a little bit as well, because I have cameras at my current strip center, I'm gonna have to upgrade them to match the requirements of this ordinance, and I got a quick quote this afternoon, so it would be about a thirty-seven hundred dollar upgrade that I'll have to do, and then the monitoring for me at this point has been about a thousand dollars a year, so, it, it becomes somewhat negligible on an annualized basis, it's that initial outlay, so.
Does, does a monitoring, I mean, the monitoring, it's, it's being recorded, is, is, does it go to a room with somebody, I mean, is this, this, would somebody watch it on a cam?
No, no, it's not active mon, it's not an active monitor, it's a retroactive or retrospective ability to capture, if you have something that happens, then you can go back and get the data that's reflected on camera.
You expect your cost on that, on that monitoring to go?
Well, it'll go up some, but I don't know that it's gonna go up significantly, 'cause once the, once the equipment is in place, then I think it's just a matter of that, that storage requirement capacity.
May I ask Mr. Sherman what his, his quote was on that?
His quote was like fourteen thousand, I think, did you, Mr. Sherman, if you're gonna, if you would, uh, need you to be able to be, um, heard, so.
Yes, depending on the quality of the camera and the, uh, the pixels, so to speak, how clear you want it, uh, price depends on that, and we've been quoted, I think we need thirty-something cameras at College Park, we're twenty-seven thousand square feet there, but the parking lot, uh, in the front and the back of that, of the businesses have to be covered, but also, which I, I didn't know, but in the ordinance, the front door has to be, the entrance and exit, they have to be covered, too.
be covered too. So, we're going to have to, we have a, uh, an overhang, and so we'll have to, we'll have to put some in the, uh, underhang to point at the front doors, uh, to catch that as well as what goes on in the parking lot. And I had a big question, so I'm glad you called me back up here. My big question was enforcement. I didn't read that in the ordinance. How is it enforced? Is it going to be like the sign ordinance where if you're, you got a sign that's not in accordance with the sign ordinance?
We, uh, we have a penalty section, which is violation, the ordinance is punishable by a fine of not more than one thousand dollars. Each day of noncompliance constitutes a separate violation.
Right. I, I've read that part, but what I meant was, how is it enforced? Do you have an enforcement officer that comes?
We have a code enforcement officer, yes.
And they come and they find out if your camera's working or not?
I think we're probably not going to have an issue unless we need the camera and it, and it is not, it has not been working.
Because I, I can see a, a big misuse, I mean, let's just say you're a fast food place, and you say, well, I don't really have the money to put an expensive camera system in, I'm going to go on Amazon and buy four cameras and stick them up and, you know? Those kind of things need to be enforced, I mean, if we're going to have an ordinance...
I, I think, I think, and again, this is kind of preliminary, but I think that the initial enforcement will be the cameras fit the requirement. After that, the continued monitoring, continued, uh, maintenance will be something that might end up being something, uh, per occasion or pay, per occurrence basis.
Sounds like a big undertaking to enforce it, because you're talking about every restaurant in town would fall under the twenty-five parking lot rule, and, um, it just, uh, I don't know if it means we're going to have to hire somebody else for enforcement of this particular ordinance?
Well, we can, we can reach that when we come to it.
Okay, well, that was my question about enforcement and...
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman, what, what was the quote on your, on the monitoring cost you got in the form?
Uh, it was about, about what the mayor said, about a thousand, it was maybe ninety dollars a month, kind of thing, ninety to a hundred dollars a month, so a thousand, twelve hundred dollars to monitor. And, uh, you can get any level of that you want, you can have it on your phone and watch it all day long. But it does have to have a recording device that they would want to put, like at our shopping center, they probably want to put it in my store in a closet or something. Uh, you know, it's a, I guess it's a hard drive, I don't know that much about it, but anyway, thank y'all. And, and as far as, uh, Mr. Perkins' remarks about keeping the city safe, I think it's a great idea that if we're going to do this, then you ought to have it in apartment complexes and, you know, in neighborhoods, I mean, where does it end? So, if you're going to protect the whole city with this big umbrella of video, let's do it.
All right, thank you so much. Anything else, Alderman Beatty?
Thanks, Mayor, appreciate it.
Anyone else? All right, we will move on to our next subject. Mr. Havlin, you're up.
This is the first of three public hearings. This is VA twenty-three dash twelve, this is for Walmart signage at one-ten Highway Twelve West. It's the supercenter on the west side of town. Uh, the applicant proposing to replace six existing wall signs on the side of the building with seven new wall signs. The image up there is showing what is being proposed and, uh, where the signs would be located in the general location of where they already currently exist. The total area of the proposed wall signs on the front facade of the building is three-hundred-and-thirty-one square feet, which is a total of eighty-one square feet above the maximum permitted amount of two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Once they were informed of this, they, they did some modifications, and then they decided to go with this design and pursue the variance. This was noticed in accordance with UDC, thirty-nine property owners of record were notified by mail. A legal ad was published on November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, and then re-notified on January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four due to the ice storm. A sign was posted on the property, and as, as of this date, planning has had two phone calls requesting further...
Gentlemen, if y'all would take it outside, please, thank you.
Requesting further, uh, information. Um, we have had some calls that, due to the notification about their fence, that had nothing to do with what the notification was about. There are a total of six criteria for any variance review and approval, and at the December twentieth, twenty-twenty-three Board Adjustment Appeals meeting, they voted unanimously to recommend approval. If there are any questions?
Any questions to Mr. Havlin?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
All right.
Being consistent tonight.
It's okay.
Oh, Mr. Havlin, this is a designed Walmart using now, this is, this is, what they're asking us is, is the, the size of the sign, the square footage of this signage larger than what our code?
Yeah, it's just...
Or is it not high, it's not...
The total added amount of all the signage on a facade exceeds the amount, yes.
This is what I, I see, now Walmart, in a lot of places, does not use side and rear signs, but in this store, they have exposure to the side and the rear where, if I were there, I'd want to put my sign back there, you know?
Yeah, they're, they're uniquely positioned where you can see it from how we...
A lot of places, you know, the side of their store, you got other places obscured, the backs, woods, or whatever, part, or driveway in a woods, in woods, okay, but not this, this section.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Havlin. All right, I will open it as a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak to the matter of the signage for Walmart, now would be the time. Yes, sir, if you would come forward, please, that'd be great, and give us your name.
Hello, uh, my name is Jeff Davis, I'm with, uh, PB Two Architecture and Engineering, we're the architects, uh, record for this, uh, remodel project.
Oh, so you're representing Walmart, and I should have asked for the applicant, thank you very much, that was my bad, please, go ahead.
It's all right. Um, I just wanted to, uh, point out a couple things. Um, I don't know if there's a, is there an existing variance on the building for the current sign package?
I don't believe so.
Okay, okay. Well, the, um, the type, the sign package is, uh, actually going down in square footage from what is actually on the building right now. So, the reconfiguration of the Walmart logo, you see in the middle of the, uh, front elevation and, uh, well, back elevation, that's going to be the old logo, yes. Um, the reconfigur, reconfigurations of the, the logos reduces the overall size of the, uh, signs that we're being, uh, proposing. Um, when you look at the store, the store is about, oh, over five hundred feet long and with multiple entrances. Uh, those entrances correspond to, you know, you think of it, different departments within a, uh, like a, uh, a large department store, so you have the, uh, the grocery side, the home and pharmacy side, uh, vision center over that, that door, um, directionals to the, uh, auto care center and pickup. Um, usually, when you're talking about two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, we're talking about a smaller building, that's a lot closer to the road. And, uh, well, Walmart does sit way back, um, so the signs are not designed to be attention-getting, they're more for, uh, directing traffic inside the parking lot. So, you're already at Walmart, and I want to go to the grocery, I, I need some celery for whatever I'm making, you can go to the grocery side and park in that area as opposed to, um, well, I was at Walmart in, in twenty-ten when, uh, uh, Walmart reconfigured everything on the inside, they moved the pharmacy from one side to the other side, but they didn't change a sign. So, we got a lot of angry emails from a lot of angry people saying, I went to this side and says pharmacy, but the pharmacy's on the other side of the building. So, we had to, you know, act fast and get that settled, so. Um, the signs that we were proposing, other than the, uh, the Walmart signs and the pickup sign, um, are meant to be more wayfinding and directing traffic as opposed to advertising.
Okay, well, thank you, sir, we appreciate that.
Sure, thank you.
Let me see if there's anyone else, I think everybody in here's been to Walmart, and we're, we're pretty comfortable with, uh, with the services provided, so we appreciate it. Um, anyone wishing to speak to this matter, now would be your opportunity, either for or against. All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and any questions from the board members? Do I have a motion?
I'll make such a motion.
All right, a motion to approve from Alderman Beatty, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Vaughn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, thank you so much. All right, Mr. Havlin, item C.
Next one is special exception twenty-three dash zero-six. This is a request by the Empowerment Station Academy to allow for a special exception from the built-in standards relating to facade colors in a commercial neighborhood zoning district. This is the daycare that's located on Woodfield Street, um, kind of toward the curve right before you get to Highway Twelve. Uh, this is the photos of what the building looked like prior to being painted.
Let me see if I've cut some lines.
And then the photo on the bottom is what the building currently looks like. After the building was, uh, repainted to that color you see on the bottom, uh, code enforcement contacted the owner. The owner chose to apply for a special exception to keep the current colors, which would, uh, fall under a special, uh, special exception review. Uh, this was noticed in accordance with UDC, nineteen property owner, property owners were notified directly by mail in a legal ad on December twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, and it was re-advertised on January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And the sign was posted on the property. As of this date, we received one phone call in support of the request. The applicant did submit a letter, uh, I guess stating their case, and that was included in the packet. And then as with any special exception, this is the, uh, review and approval criteria, and on January ninth, twenty-twenty-four, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request.
All right.
If there are any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Havlin. Any questions to Mr. Havlin before we open it as a public hearing? Alderman Beatty?
Was this a forgiveness rather than ask permission thing, like T-Mobile? Had they, had they already done it?
Uh, yeah, they had already done it prior to, uh, code enforcement.
Okay.
Anything else?
Okay.
Anyone before, Alderman Siskel?
I'd, I'd like to stake out my position here, and I'm, frankly, I'm surprised that, um, there was a unanimous recommendation to allow this, um, to, to be approved as, as a variance. Um, we have made some variance exceptions, and I'd like to do something, um, that is consistent with that if we do anything, and the, the exceptions that we have made have been, um, for awnings at Alta and awnings at, um, T- T-Mobile. Um, in no case did we do a full building, um, exception, so if there's, while they don't have that clear awning exception, uh, in both those cases, that was a small part of the entire facade of the building, and, and if there's some middle ground that we could do that would, would allow that sort of variance, I, I could see my way to vote for that. I can't see my way forward to vote for, uh, an exception for the entire building.
All right, um, anyone else before I open, Alderman Vaughn?
It's a daycare, right?
Yes, sir. Currently, it's a daycare.
Currently, it's a daycare, all right. That's what, that's, that's what, that's what, to me, it look good to me because of the kids. And that, or that top, the door, but this is look more brighter, more, uh, tempered to a beauty place, I'm going to take my child. And then you give it a look, all white colors, but there, you can see more of the colors, but you can see pictures of kids in light colors, in low light colors, I like it.
Vice Mayor Perkins, do you want to wait till I open as a...
I, I want your thoughts on that.
Um, well, I am, I am, uh, not enamored of us making this large an exception to our ordinance. I understand an awning is one thing, an entire building is another thing, and the vibrancy of this is rather extreme. I recall us, in fact, part of the reason we got this ordinance in the first place, or this element of the ordinance in the first place, was what I recall to be a seriously Pepto-Bismol building that was on Lewisville Street, um, Lewisville and Twelve, I believe it was, anyway, it was a...
Jackson and Twelve.
Jackson and Twelve, all right, it was a, it was a, an extreme case of color, and, and I think we have a slippery slope here where we to, um, go down it, so that's, that is where I am, so, um, anyway, but I, I do need, is applicant here?
Uh, no.
All right, Mr.?
Francois.
All right, you have an opportunity to come up and make your case, how about you do that?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Gordon. Um, my name is Evason Francois.
I'm sorry, would you say it?
Evason Francois.
Okay, thank you.
Um, uh, my company owns, owns the building, but my wife runs the business, um, well, my wife owns the business. Um, we've been in childcare for about ten years now. Our other building is located in Ren, Mississippi, which is very country, so not a lot of rules and laws that, since we've been out there. So, we didn't know that we were going against any ordinance with the color that we went to. So, we, um, we renovated the inside to where it's a lot more colorful, got pictures on the wall, and we did a, a whole mural with the whole wall, but when you pull up, that's what you saw, gray, and, you know, early morning, as a, as a parent, you're already not in the mood, to show up to something like that is depressing. So, we just went to, to color the outside to match the inside, to, you know, just bring cheer as a childcare center. And based on where we sit in that location, it's not something you just drive up to that hits you in your face to where it's just an annoyance. It's something that, as you come around the corner, you have to really kind of look at, say, oh, okay, and you keep on, keep on in your way. It's not on Highway Twelve where it, where traffic is non-stop, where that thing is just in your face all the time and where you go. To go to this place and next to it's like a blue building. So, um, I understand, um, as far as, you know, what it looks like based on the picture you're seeing, but if you went, you know, to drive around and see the building itself, it wouldn't look like it is right now. Based on even the, the picture of it, it makes everything look way shinier than it really is. So, that's my, that's my, um, argument for it.
Any questions from the applicant? No, all right, if you would step back and let me go ahead and open it to the public. Thank you, sir. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against a public hearing, either for or against? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Um, any discussion among the board members? All right, Alderman Beatty?
Alderman Vaughn, you want, do you have any further?
I want to make a motion.
You want to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I mean, I guess I, I need to say that, that we're, and I guess we, it's going to happen with every exception, but we've, we've gotten into an unfortunate situation now of picking and choosing who we do this to. And, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not le, there's no le, because I mean, I, I've run it, I, there, there are things where I'll, I'll, I'll struggle with, you know, whether to do it or not, but at this board meeting, two or three meetings ago, we approved T-Mobile to have a, I want to say something, I'll probably get to somebody, somebody, but, uh, unusual color, is their corporate color, but a, a very bright color for their awning, it basically did the same thing on, they put it in and then came for us and asked us for forgiveness, basically after the fact, and then once the zoning board got it approved. And I guess what I'm saying is that we're in a situation where we now pick and choose just like we do on the, on some of the other stuff in town, some of the, the, the tax and things and things like that, and, um, the zoning board has approved this as an exception even though it doesn't meet our codes, is that right?
They recommended approval.
They recommended for approval. And based on the, our recent history of having approved something that's got an awning that looked very eerily similar to what is on this, you know, very similar to what's on this building, I don't know how we turn what, turn, turn this down. I mean, except unless, but, yes, I do, the board votes it down, but I, I just don't see how we, at this point in time, can, can, can vote it down. I mean, and be consistent and be fair, because we just approved one that, that didn't ask us, it's a corporate, this gentleman's a, got two vacuums, this wasn't one off for him, but he said the other place was a small town, T-Mobile, M U B, and they just, they, they did that and thought, so, okay, struggle, won't turn it down, let's, we'll just put that thing up, probably, they should have known, if they didn't, they should have known better. So, I don't know how we don't approve this one based on our, our recent history with ha, our experience with having approved, uh, a, a building out on Highway Twelve, it's got twenty-five, thirty thousand cars on it today, a lot more explosive, it's got, this, this got a, a very bright color awning that, um, that does not meet our code. Mayor, you?
Well, I can, I'm going to, I'm going to weigh in here just for a second. Um, I can distinguish it easily from my perspective, so I, when you say that you don't know how we do that, I, I can distinguish it because it is an entire building, it's not just an awning. So, um, that would be my distinction, and I'm comfortable with that distinction, so just to respond to that, so, Alderman Vaughn?
I think it's very attractive for children to see, and like, um, Davey said, vote adjustment, you said, who didn't vote adjustment field, point zone, non-P and Z... just, you see who didn't vote in just for feel, plan zone, knowing when P and Z united to do something, we know that we're behind P and Z and approve what they know and ask for. And I'm, I'm just, I apologize. I just don't see why, I don't see why we don't approve it. I'm making a motion.
That's what I was going to say. Make, all right, make your motion to, to approve.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? All right. Make a motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
I'll say.
I have a second from Alderman Beatty. All right. All those in favor, well, let's do this. Roll call vote, how about that? Um, Ms., would you answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name?
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
Well, I get to vote. We are, we are shy individuals, so I'm going to say nay.
And is there, is there the possibility of a variance that would allow him to have some color? Because I can certainly appreciate how, how the color is, is an attractive element there. But in keeping with the, the level of exceptions that we've done before with awnings?
Yeah, theoretically, there's something he could, you know, propose, and we could look at it, and we could guide him on what the appropriate action would be to get that particular design through.
So come back through the process?
That's, that's what I would encourage, because I do think, I do think that, that there would be, um, that we, that we recognize that we have made variances, we, we understand the degree to which we've granted those variances, and we just want to keep this one in line with those other variances.
All right. So do you want to make a motion to deny this variance?
Um, I suppose I need to.
Well, either that or we've not acted on it. So other than, other than to deny the approval.
Then I move that we deny the variance and recommend, um, reapplying with a different, within consultation with our planning department.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Perkins. All right. Let's do this once again, same. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Beatty.
All right. And I'll answer, but I'll, this is to go back and give these folks a chance to modify the design, the front painting of this to allow this to be, um, approved by us. Does it go back to zoning? I mean, I need clarification. Go back to zoning board, then come back to us. What, how does that, what's the process?
Go back through the process. Just a moment.
Um, Mr. Havelon?
We need to be, go back to the process or?
Can we expedite it?
If you want to, well, if you want to dictate to them what to do, I guess you could do that in a motion as well, but.
Yeah, it could be a board's discretion how, how you want to handle it. Go straight back here.
So, so can, and that would be my intention, that, that it come back to us after he's consulted with, with the planning department.
With the change?
With the change.
Okay. So that's part of your motion?
Yes.
All right. A second, Vice Mayor? Is that good?
Should be.
Okay. All right. So that would be to come back to the board straight with revised, um, plan?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that was a yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yay.
Nay.
All right. Vote three, three to one, the vote carries. Um, and you didn't have any problem getting that, did you, Ms. Harden?
No, I don't believe so.
Comfortable with the, with the, um, motion?
With modifications and changes to come straight back to the board of Alderman.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right.
I'll make one more statement before this is over. They come, and that is new development on Highway twelve, bigger, expensive, or nationals, and, and going to come to us. And, and at this point forward, we need to blow our necks as these fellows put up and be consistent. I know there are exceptions. There are always exceptions, and then that's what the zoning board is for. So when they approve, when, when they, it, it can go like Alderman Vaughn said, act consistently on their, on their recommendations. But, um, we're going to have some more of this. We're growing city, that kind of thing. And we're going to have to be able to say no when it comes time to say no to a, a big company that we really want to come in town, but we really need to say, we want you here, come here, build your building, make money, but do it according to our codes and our, our building codes and our color standards and things. If we don't, there's no, there's no need to have.
And, and?
Alderman Sistrunk?
Um, and, and I don't disagree that perhaps what we have learned from these three variances that we've granted is that we need to, as we modify our, our design standards and our codes, that this is something that we need to consider as, as part of those modifications.
Please, sir, please.
All right. We have, we need to move on. If you, if you wait till after, after the meeting, we're passing to the next one. Mr. Havelon?
It's only going to be a minute or two before we're done with the meeting, if, if you can hang in.
This is VA twenty-three dash fourteen. This is a request by, by Tidbehaw County Humane Society. They are located down on Industrial Park Road. The applicant is expanding their existing site to include a kennel and spay and neuter facility. That would also require a stormwater detention pond to be built. The proposed facility totals forty-six hundred square feet. The sense of proposed structure is more than a thousand. It requires site plan review and architecture review, which triggers the stormwater requirements. The site is located within a flood plain. Therefore, any detention pond that's built in a flood plain is required to be built above the flood plain, thus requiring the whole site to be raised because to get the water in the detention pond, the rest of the site has to be up higher than it. And so these two images, the image on the left is what's already been approved. They needed to get their approval to move forward, so they went ahead and designed it as if, you know, everything was to code, the detention ponds out of the flood plain. And you can see right here, there's a large retaining wall. And you can see just a number of contours, how high up it's being built, uh, from the, from the surrounding area. The image on the right is what they're, would propose to do, which significantly reduced the cost of constructing it in as to not have the detention pond. They are located, uh, in a fairly large area. There's not a lot of development around it. There's not going to be a lot of development around it over the years. Um, so the city engineer, I'll speak for him a little bit, he had no real concerns with it not having the detention, just following the codes that it required to show it on the site plan. This request was noticed in accordance with the UDC. Eleven property owners of record were notified by mail in a legal ad in the Starkville Daily News on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and a sign on a property. And we have had no response from the notification. Um, there are six criteria for any variance review and approval, and there are two additional criteria for stormwater variances. At the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, Board of Adjustments Appeals Meeting, they voted unanimously to recommend the approval.
Any questions to Mr. Havelon? Mr. Burnett, would you come up here just a second, please? We'll, I won't keep you long. I just want you to speak to the flood plain issue real quickly, please.
So just as the flood plain relates to this issue?
Please.
So, um, one of the requirements for any property in the flood zone is it requires a detention system, which is something that captures the water and holds it. It has to be above the base flood elevation. That's the hundred-year flood elevation. This makes sense, because during a hundred-year flood, everything is flooded anyway. So your detention is not able to store what's already flooded. In some places, this is a non-issue. So Starkville Academy, for example, is elevated much above the flood plain. So this is a very easy requirement for them to get per se. In this instance, the, the flood elevation is probably at grade or even higher than, than the ground. And so if you think about a detention pond, it typically would recess. So in order to design, they would have to fill that detention bowl and bring everything six, eight feet above grade. So very cumbersome and difficult to do.
And so you have no concerns about the variance that's being requested at this point in time?
There, I have no issues of flooding downstream that I'm able of. Um, I think it mostly is forced to land at this point. It's mostly flood plain, so I'm, I'm not overly concerned.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other discussion before I open it as a public hearing? All right. Seeing none, I'll open this as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter now would be the opportunity. This is the Humane Society on Industrial Park Road asking for a variance from the stormwater requirement. Anyway, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Um, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
A motion for approval from Alderman Sistrunk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. And then, um, the item that was removed from consent is a consideration resolution seeking a no-match twenty twenty-four raise grant for the purposes of, turn your phone off.
It's off, it's off. It's had the life of its own.
For the purposes of supplementing the twenty nineteen build grant to complete the Highway one eighty-two redevelopment project. I am, I'm bringing this forward because we were, we were told that there is a twenty twenty-four raise grant that is intended to supplement grants that are in existence, have been in existence, that were unable to make the, um, project work because of cost overruns. So it is a no-match grant. So there is a no harm, no foul to us at this point. If we were to receive it, it would be under that no-match set of circumstances. Um, and in allusion to your, to my Washington trip, that is something I will, I will do myself. I'm not asking the city to pay for it.
I appreciate that. I was just trying, I wanted to get this where you could explain.
Got you. Okay. So anyway, this is, this is one of those things that while I, I don't, we don't know, just like a bill grant, we don't know that we will get it. But I think it is certainly worth the effort to go out there and see. We have gotten letters of support from the governor, that both senators, our congressmen, so, and, and local business people. Um, so I am hopeful that we might get the same kind of consideration we got for the build grant. It's supposed to be awarded by June, which would give us an opportunity to know that we can do the entire project as opposed to a phased-in portion of the project. So that's the goal with this.
Mayor, right now, that, that just without the raise, for the, without getting additional money to the raise grant, the reduced scope of the work would be what? From, from Montgomery Street to the, to Ward Stewart?
It'd be from Jackson.
Jack, I'm sorry, Jack, Jackson. From Jackson.
From Jackson.
I thought it was Montgomery, but just Jack.
From Jackson to Henderson. That'd be the core, the, the core area with the most issues associated with the stormwater, the, you know, water sewer, et cetera. So it would be taking care of those things and giving you also above-ground distinctions when then we would have to then potentially phase in those other areas of, of desired improvement, which would be Olvis Point Road up to Long Street.
And how much was, how much was the cost? We got an estimate to do the work. How much was the cost of that section you're talking about?
Um, that's, that strictly that section we're talking about?
From, from Jackson to the, to the Ward Stewart?
It would be the twenty, it would be the twenty-five million, and we need another twenty to make the rest up.
Twenty-five million was approximately ten million for, in our, of, of the water sewer and stormwater mitigation or?
Yes. And that was our share as well as the state's matching.
Right. That's put in, put in lock. And then fifteen million, which was the original bill grant amount. Um, um, and so you're saying that, now let me, is the, did we get a firm bid on that to do that work? Did we?
Firm bid?
I mean, did what, the forty-one million was what?
That was a, well, um, there you are. Sorry, you moved. Mr. Burnett, would you come forward? That was an, that was an estimate, an engineer's estimate, right?
So we, we did have bids when project.
And we had to reject them. That's true.
We rejected those because of the cost.
So we don't have a current bid.
But what was, and the low bid was four, was, or the lowest annual best bid was what, forty-one?
I've got thirty-four written down. Thirty, I think it was thirty-three and a half was the low bid.
So now what, where did I get the idea of forty-one? Where did that?
So that, that includes all the various other elements, the off corridor, the design, CE and I. So that, we, we look at this as what does it cost to construct this project?
Total package. So with, with the bid and the additional work was forty-one million?
Yes, sir.
Reduced scope, total cost, including the stuff you're talking about, is twenty-five million, right? Is that?
That, that's our, that's our best guess. We're designing and building these plans as a entire project. That helps our cases. We apply for the raise grant. But we will build that portion. We think that that section from Jackson to Henderson is, is the area that will fit to build.
Mayor, in the absence of a, of a quote, well, we had, uh, let me put, let me, we had a quote. And those, of course, and we, we didn't select a bid, we didn't have the money. But, or didn't select a contract, we didn't have the money. But, um, would we, if we go to Washington, if you go to Washington and ask for eighteen or nineteen million dollars, something like that, do we know we're going to have enough to cover this additional? I mean, it looks like without some type of a, a price that we can, from a contractor, that we can say, okay, now here's the total scope of work, and this is what it costs, and this is what this phase one would be, and it's this amount. And if we're successful in this, your contract, your nego, this negotiated thing says you would do phase two for this amount, for the total amount of what we, the money we will have available. I mean, that's, that's what, I mean, with escalating cost and things, I guess that's, that's what I would.
Forty-one was our worst-case scenario.
Those bids were based on the bids when the project was not redesigned.
Right.
We have redesigned projects. We, we anticipate a lot of cost savings through that, taking over the roadway, putting the infrastructure under the road.
So we expect a reduction, but our current bid that we had in hand was roughly the total was the forty-one million. And so, you know, with that, we can, we can, with a straight face and with a comfort level, say that this is, you know, roughly nineteen, twenty million is what it's going to take for us to complete this project comfortably and in its original scope and design.
From Olvis Point to Max Mead Martin.
Yes. Olvis Point to Long.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. So with that, I assume that we were still going, moving forward with that, in which case I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Beatty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Vaughn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right. Motion carries. Uh, we have a claim stocket.
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk, a second. Alderman Beatty, I need her to say.
I'll stop, so you go.
Thank you so much. All right. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Nay.
I get to vote again. I will vote yea. See how I planned that?
Yeah.
All right. Motion carries. All right. With that, with that, that closes out our agenda, if you will allow me to read, um, the calling of the work session.
Close.
In accordance, in accordance with the notices required in the Mississippi Code Annated twenty-five, forty-one, thirteen, the board will have a work session on Friday the sixteenth of February, twenty twenty-four at eleven a.m. That meeting will be held at City Hall in the second floor conference room located at one-ten West Main Street. Notice should be provided to the work session within one hour of this meeting by posting such notice at City Hall. The notice should be made a part of the minutes of the board meeting. It will be an open public meeting in the city of Starkville, and public and press are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to recess, please? I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn, second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty, I heard. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right. We are in recess. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to have a quorum.